Do you not hear this? Anyway. Yeah, welcome to the Sterling Board of Selectmen Meeting, July 20th, 22, and we're going to open this meeting with a roll call.
Kilcoyne present.
Smith present.
Krantz present, and then all that can stand and do the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the oath of which it stands, my nation, under God, in the judicial law, of liberty and justice for all.
And have you gentlemen had a chance to peruse our minutes and see the changes that Common made for us?
I have.
Yeah, I haven't seen them changed, but I'm sure they're fine.
What were you calling?
No, I just, I don't want to say where I was, but I guess it was.
John's, John's, I, can you think of his binder, so his is what? Oh, his is updated. He liked it better. I get that.
Thank you.
However, I got the email.
I'm fine then. I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes of Board of, Town of Sterling Board of Selectmen Meeting, Select Board Meeting, excuse me, July 6, 2022.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. And tonight, we have Pat Fox in to give us an update on the Neighbor to Neighbor Program that he chairs and conduct to with the Friends of the Sterling seniors.
Thank you. Good evening. I know the Board is familiar with the Neighbor to Neighbor Program, but for the benefit of people watching the meeting who may not know about it, let me just give a brief overview. The program-
Is this a Pat Fox brief, or is this a real brief?
This is a real brief.
Oh, okay.
You can, you have the authority to come and stop at any time. Several years ago, the fund was created by Sterling resident Kevin Bopray, and I should take this opportunity to publicly commend Mr. Bopray for having the vision to put this program together. And the fund exists to provide temporary financial assistance to individuals and families in town who find themselves in difficult economic circumstances. It may be due to a job loss, or sudden illness, or for some other reason, they find themselves in economic difficulty. And the intent of the fund is to help them get back on their feet. To use Mr. Kilcoyne's phrase, it's intended to be a hand up rather than a handout. And I have been involved or connected with the fund since 2016. And since that time, I can give you some of the statistics. Twenty-eight people, a total of 28 people have been helped. The fund has paid out in excess of $31,000 in financial assistance. And it should be pointed out, the money is not paid to the applicants. It's paid to vendors to assist them with essential living expenses. A hundred and seventeen donations have been received from individuals and organizations. Some people have donated more than once. And total, in excess of $34,000 in private donations have been received. That's from individuals and organizations. So that's one source of funding. The other source of funding is the Municipal Light Department's Roundup Program. And for people who are not familiar with that program, rate payers may, if they sign up with the light department, agree to have their monthly bill rounded up to the next whole dollar. And for example, if the bill was $60.01, it would be rounded up to $61. That .99 would be applied to the Roundup Program, which doesn't sound like a lot individually, but all of these donations are pooled, and then every month, the light department sends a check to the fund under the Roundup Program. And the average amount is anywhere from $220 to $225 per month. So the fund is supported by those two means, individual donations and the Roundup Program. If people wish to apply for assistance, they can go to the town's website and go to the About Sterling section, scroll down to Local Organizations, and then the Neighbor to Neighbor link. When it comes to online technology, my litmus test is if I can do it, anyone can, and I can do it. So it's very easy to access, access, I should say. If people don't have access to a computer, they can write to the fund's address, which is PO Box 173 in Sterling. Or if all else fails, they can call me. The number is 774-275-1174, and I can see to it that an application is sent out. People, by going online, can access the applications as well as the guidelines. And they are readily available online. As I say, if people don't have that level of technology, they can write to the fund's address and the guidelines, and the application can be sent to them. In addition, donations are always welcome. And again, donations, I should say that the fund is affiliated with the Friends of Sterling Seniors, which is a nonprofit corporation in Sterling. And because of that affiliation, people who choose to donate to the fund can claim a tax deduction for income tax purposes, if they choose to donate to the fund. So that, I think, in some substance is all I have to say about it. I don't know if other towns have a program like this, but I'm glad that Sterling does. I think it's a nice credit for the town. So that's the report, unless the board has any questions.
Pat?
No, very good job, Pat, covering that. We had our meeting of the Board of Directors about a month ago, and there's three of us, and I think they're, from what I understand, they're appointed now by the Friends of the Sterling Senior Center, which is good. Judge Fox has been doing this for us, as he said, since 2016. A lot of, you do 90% of the work, so we, you know, you should, it's a lot of appreciation by all of us for that, because you look at the applications and then decide initially if they're all filled out properly, et cetera, et cetera, and then get it out to Mr. Chandler and myself, and then we review them and decide if they're eligible, and we have a vote. And basically, it's 1,500 one time, 3,000 over the course of life, I don't know if it's a lifetime, but 3,000 is the most anyone family, resident of Sterling, it can be given out, and we look at that every year. And it's, you know, it's, if, there's, generally, if there's like a unique thing that has occurred to the family, if they've lost their job, or something has happened, and it has reduced their income temporarily, and they do need a handout, whether it be for the electric bills, or whatever, and it's a good thing. If it's a permanent thing, then it's, the fund is not designed for that. But I think it served a good purpose, a really good purpose. I think, to your point, I know West Minister has a fund like this, and, but Kevin and Lisa Bopray were the ones who came up with the idea and initially funded it, and we've kept it pretty close to the initial charter that they presented. And, you know, what's amazing is, I mean, thanks to the donations, the Roundup Program, I don't know how many people know about that, but, but the fund had, as of June, I think it was approximately, the year before, 34,000, and after donation, after distributions and donations, net, it had 38,000 at the end of June last month. So it's, it's a healthy fund, and, you know, it's available to Sterling residents going through, you know, every year.
Regarding the Roundup Program, if people aren't aware of it, it's very easy to participate. You'd simply contact the light department, and I think it can be done over the phone. And again, the most that any one rate payer would pay on any one account would be $12 a year. So it's a small donation, but when they're pooled with everybody else's donations, it makes a difference.
Okay, you have any questions for Patrick?
Thank you for your service, and my question is just answered. I wondered how the Roundup Program was implemented, but the taxpayers, the rate payers would contact the light department directly, would you think that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
The other thing too is if you don't have access to a computer at home, we have the computers at the library, the senior center, so you can at least look up the program and get your, have them print up an application for you. So, thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Enjoy the rest of the meeting.
You're gonna stay, right?
Not like they cool.
Thanks, Pat. Okay. And I know that the fair and the insurance is another topic, but we have Samantha here, who, you know, came in to actually tell us about the business that she was looking for a Common Vic license for. I know we hesitated to issue it because we didn't have any other information about the business, so she's going to tell us something, and then just know that the Board of Health and the town clerk has signed off on her request. Sam?
So first, thank you all for inviting me here today to speak a little bit more about my business in regards to the Common Vic. I did see the recording from the last meeting, and I noted some of the questions that you guys had for me, so I'll just talk a little bit about what it is that I offer and how I operate. So I provide baked goods, primarily a variety of cookies. My signature items are hand-decorated sugar cookies. I also make job cookies, French macarons, and other baked items as well. I make my items per order, which means that I typically only make what my clients order for special events, like birthdays, bridal showers, baby showers, events like that. Clients can then either pick up their order at my home, or I can also deliver as well. I brought some examples of what I do. If anyone is interested in taking a look at what that looks like, feel free. Otherwise, I do also attend local markets with a variety of cookies and baked goods, where customers are able to buy smaller quantities of things, including seasonal items. If you've ever been to the Leominster Market, I've been in attendance there for the last two years, and I'm looking forward to potentially moving into some of the Sterling markets as well. I'm serve-safe certified, allergen awareness certified, and I've held food establishment licenses in Worcester, Leominster, and Hockington. I was previously baking and packaging out of a shared commercial kitchen in Worcester through the Worcester Regional Food Hub. I was very limited in times that I could use the kitchen, though I do work a full-time job and have a small child at home, so as you can imagine, it's not a lot of time for me to get there to bake. So I have worked with the Sterling Board of Health, and I've met all the necessary requirements. I've obtained the necessary permits, so now I've come to you to consider my Common Vic application, and I'm open to any other questions that you may have.
Sounds like it's mostly delivery-type operation right now, and special events, different things that are going on in those towns you mentioned. Okay.
Yes.
Ellen, thank you for coming in. We're not trying to complicate your life by having you come in, but we would like to know what's going on in our town, and we definitely support small business.
Absolutely.
We commend you on your efforts.
Thank you.
We already talked.
Okay.
Yeah, no, thank you. Really, it just makes it clearer to us what is going on, and feel better about the fact that the Board of Health has been there. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Now go put that baby to bed.
That might take my time.
Oh, wait a minute.
I have another hour. Is it okay to leave things here?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm sure there's people in this room who'd love to try them.
They're all labeled with ingredients, if anyone has any questions.
All right. Thanks, Sam. Yeah, I figured that's what you were doing. Yeah, I would entertain a vote to issue the Common Vic license for Sugar Gillies. Samantha Gilchrist?
Yeah, I'll make that motion in those words.
Second.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. Okay. And now, we're going to go to the insurance requirements for the fair, which came in as a huge surprise to us. So if you want to come up in, give us a little overview, and then we'll ask a whole bunch of questions.
So in the past, the Maya program kind of extended a lot. Oh, hi, I'm Joanne Stalpazano. I'm an account executive for Maya, and I do the insurance for the town. You're my member. So in the past, the Maya program was very liberal in what they covered and what they didn't cover. Over the past few years, they have really taken the time and rewritten the entire program. Starting July 1, 21, new requirements were put in place. The certificates that were issued last year should not have been, but they were. I can't issue the same certificates this year in the same way. I can issue certificates, but I need a lot of detail. I need copies of the contracts that you've made with the individuals, that you're borrowing equipment, using their land, and renting the carts, the go-carts, the golf carts. The thing is, you have a vendor on here that you're requesting to be added as an additional insured, and they're a trash removal company, and I don't understand why you're being required to include them on your insurance when it should be the opposite. They should be required to show you proof and add you as additional insured. So if these trash haulers, or however they're going to be used, if they're going into the fair and they're removing trash, and they injure someone, you don't want them coming after the town. You want them going after the individual. And by adding yourself as an additional insured under their policy, what you're doing is you're protecting yourselves. Their insurance comes in first, and yours only comes in if theirs is all exhausted. It saves you on a lot of headache and money that could be paid out that really shouldn't have been.
Can I just throw something in there while we're talking about trash? I have other questions about other things in that, but let's talk about the trash, because that's where you are right now.
That's where I am right now.
The trash trucks, et cetera, don't come into the fairgrounds. They only come and pick those dumpsters up at the end of the day. During the day, the volunteers pick up the different trash, the different, you know, they have obviously trash buckets all over the fairgrounds, so the volunteers go around and pick up that trash, bring it to the dumpster, which is, you know, off of the, not even close to the main.
So the waste removal are just dumpsters that they're dropping off? Yes?
Go ahead, Doug. Doug is the chair of the-
Yeah, Doug Downey, I'm the Sterling Fair Chair. So the dumpsters are dropped off typically like Wednesday before the fair, and they're not picked up until Monday. So, and there's a trash company, this particular trash company is donating their services. We're not paying for it. That's the reason why I think we had put them, I think it's called a hold harmless. Is that, am I using the right? It's, you know, we have a lot of companies that donate, because the fair is all volunteer.
Right. So your hold harmless waiver from last year, you're using again?
Yes, except we have a different trash company this year that's donating.
It's pretty much the same?
The other one's been bought out, so, yeah.
Pretty much the same form?
Correct. I would say, I defer to the combo, but it's pretty much the same form, right?
Pretty much the same form. We did send it to our attorneys to make sure that the town was in, you know, in the right place on the forms, but yeah, it's pretty much the same thing.
So what I would recommend, which is going to save all of you a lot of money, when you do a hold harmless agreement, basically, you're stating you are not going to hold that company in jeopardy for anything that they may do to the town-owned property, to the town.
Okay.
And they're in turn not holding the town responsible for anything that townfolk could do to them. You're doing a mutual, right? Okay.
And it's all donated, so it's done.
Yeah. So when they ask you to add them on to your insurance as an additional insured, you're doing yourself a huge disservice, because you're adding them on for anything and everything that could happen, and people would sue you directly and not them for anything. What I think you should do is just do proof of coverage. You've got a mutual hold harmless, proof of coverage that you have coverage, that we can do. That's no problem. The thing is, in the state of Massachusetts, under Chapter 258, towns are only responsible for repaying $100,000. I strongly recommend you use that limit. That's the amount you're required. And then if you want to add additional insured, there's no cost. At your million limit, it's a $500 cost per additional insured. And right here, I've got five of them, so that's $2,500 just to add them as additional insured at your million limits.
Okay, all right.
Okay? So it is getting very expensive. The mutual hold harmless is also called a waiver of segregation, which means you're waiving your rights to go after them.
You mean the town's waiving the rights to go after the-
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And they look at you, I mean-
Yeah, 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 no, that's it. No, I didn't know if it was the other way around.
No, so the town is waiving their rights to go after them. As of July 1, 21, the charge for that is $1,500 per additional insured. So now we're looking at 3, 6, 7, 500 plus 2,500, just to cover them. You don't want to do that. You don't want to do that.
Okay. I guess my question would be, if the rules changed in July of 2021?
We went through all of it.
Who went through all of it?
When I did the review with Vicki and, what is it? No, I did, no, 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 no. Last year, I counted, I counted. No, not Kelly. Hit him.
Fred?
Fred, Fred. I'm sorry.
Oh, goddamn, I'm losing it.
So, well, probably it didn't get passed along, because we didn't have a fair last year.
That's right. And when Kelly came to me about the fair, literally, I've lived in the area, I had no idea the Sterling Fair was run by the town. I had no concept. There's so many fairs in so many towns that are run by a lioness club, or Kiwanis, or some other nonprofit. I never knew that Sterling Fair was run by the town. So when I found that out, I went to Kelly, yes, Kelly Hebert was there last year, and she filled out an application, and we went and got quotes. And she gave me all the hold harmlessness and everything, and then the fair was canceled, so we canceled our quote. So this is the issue that you have this year. The operation of the fair was never intended to be covered by Maya, period. That type of operation is called a special event. We always push out, I do, my coworkers, the other account execs do. When you have an event of this size, you really need to insure it specifically, because there are so many nuances to that one event that are not normal mutual business as usual, municipality business as usual. So that's what I want to educate you on right now. What is the best for you, and you can choose any way you want how to run it. And whether you want to buy the coverage, I'm not going to push anything on you. I'm just going to educate you as to what you really should have.
What are we looking at as far as money?
Last year, it was $10,800 for a $1 million limit, covering all the events of the fair.
So what's a better price?
I'm going to shop it. I didn't have time to shop it last year, because I was literally given just a few weeks' notice, so we grabbed the first quote we could. This year, I'm going to shop it to every special event carrier that there is and see what we can get, because we have time. I have roughly till about the 15th of August to get you that, so that's time that I have.
It's cutting it pretty close.
Isn't it in September?
Yeah, it's a month.
Yeah.
A month is time.
Yeah, it's much more than the week and a half that I had last year.
Lucky you, we didn't have it.
I was sweating too, I'll tell you. But yes, it is-
Do you see it being less? I mean, that's a big nut to go for, when, over the course of how many, 100 years or-
Eighty-one?
Yeah, that we've never had an issue with it before.
Right. And the odds have been with you, for sure. But in today's day and age, you never know what can happen in a public event. And my fear is that something happens, and you don't have the coverage through Maya. Then you're on your own, and that can become very costly. And that's my biggest fear.
And I think on the other end too, so these people that are donating the services, and that's why we ask for hold harmless, is probably not knowing what they exactly were, I guess, or on my part, I would say, you know.
If mutual, if everybody agrees to it, leave it.
Then it's okay, then you leave it. Okay, all right.
Don't add the waiver or anything. Just leave it as is.
The only one would be the golf carts.
And the golf carts you're renting, is that right?
They've always insisted.
Doesn't matter. Golf carts you considered renting.
Yes.
So we can put that on your policy, on the town's policy, and list them as additional insured lessor. That's something totally different than just an additional insured. And then we could add them on as lost payee, so that if anything happens to those carts, they get paid.
All right, okay, all right.
And, so, I mean, there are so many things that I could go through with this, that I could assist you with. Would it be easier if I came out and sat down and went over everything with whomever, as long as I'm in by dark?
You're all pointing.
So, pick a day, preferably not late apart next week, I could literally come in, I'm going to leave you with the applications that they filled out last year, the applications for this year, and the quote from last year, so that you can see what went on and what we quoted. And then I'll literally come in and go through this piecemeal, every single thing, so that when I present this to the carrier, it's all there, and we can get a quote very quickly, not on what?
So if all of the people that have all day, the trash, the, and I can't remember what they all are now, the loader that does the horse pull, if they all agreed that we don't have to have a hold harmless or mutual, the only thing would be the golf carts, and it wouldn't be any additional, or is that what you're thinking?
That would not be an additional charge.
Right, okay.
That would not be. That's the only one that would not be, because we're adding them in as a leased vehicle.
Right, right, okay. All right, so I think, yeah, we need to, because the other thing is too, if these, the people that donate, if they don't want to have that, well, now we have to go purchase those services. So there's expenses on both ends, right?
Right.
We're fortunate we have those people that would donate, you know.
You don't want to pay $10,000 just to get them a piece of paper that says, I mean, it's-
So you're really saying it would be $20,000?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's just this. Yeah.
Those were like $20,000?
Well, no, because we're doing it differently.
Oh, that's good.
We're going to try to work around this as best we can, where it's least costly for you, but it, the fair itself was never fully covered by Maya, ever. I can tell you that right from the start, because it is considered a special event.
Do you realize now, Joanna, you put us jinx on our fair?
Oh, no. I'm going to protect you. I'm going to protect you. But- But, no.
Just, anyway, it's a special event, and you just size like all the other events we have in town, right?
Well, there are different events that are considered special events. If you have a parade that has over 1,000 people, participants, that is a special event. That would be something like a 250th anniversary of a town where you have all these special events that you plan. That's not part of the normal day-to-day work. A 4th of July cookout and parade that happens every year, that's not a special event. That's part of your municipal work. Christmas lighting, Christmas card, that's all part of that. But a Christmas ball for a town that's on their 250th anniversary, that's a special event. So it's pretty simple. If it's part of your normal everyday workings, except for the fair.
Because it is, but...
Yeah, but it is, it isn't because of what you have in the fair. In our forms, I just, and I'll leave this with you too. Come on now. July 1, 21, this form was amended, and I did go through everything that was excluded. Maya has specifically listed what they will not cover. This page, they can cover it, but it is a fee involved. So I'm going to leave these with you, Bill, so that you can review them. But included is the carnivals or fairs. It's not intended to be covered through Maya.
But there's like the carnival stuff?
Carnivals and fairs.
Oh, carnivals and fairs.
Are not intended.
Kama, you have a question?
I just was wondering, all of the, Mrs. Gillette, she supplies us with their insurance in case there's an issue with any of the carnival, and each of the vendors, also vendors, common decks, they all have to give us their insurance. We make sure that we have their insurance. So that's, I just wanted you to know that.
Yeah, that is a very good practice, by the way. Anyone who is having any event, or the carnival, or food vendors, or the balloon guys, as long as they provide you proof of coverage, you're covered. You're covered.
So we don't need you? Thank you for stopping by.
You're very welcome. But that's what a lot of...
So that needs to be in the equation, because if we, because they're already covering, and we're already held harmless in certain areas, and then they're insured, so...
I'll go through every piece of it.
Okay, with Bill, with John, yeah.
And, because I think a lot, we went through it too, a lot of it is no's. It's mainly just people that give us, you know, something, so...
But you do have the hall, where you have like pie, you know, people that bake and they go in there. A lot of them are home, they do it as a hobby, they don't carry insurance, and you can't get proof of coverage from their homeowner's insurance. They won't give it to you.
But the people don't eat it, it's, except for the judges, but, like, it's not like the food is given out or anything afterwards, it's...
Oh, this is, these are contests then, like the pie contest?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, so if somebody makes a pie and they bring it...
They're just putting it out so people can buy it?
We have vendors too, but they have their own insurance.
Oh, okay, I'm good with that.
But like the exhibit hall, it's, yeah, we don't give the, you know, the, so the judges take a piece and judge it, but that's it, so...
Oh, okay. Yep. And I also have another thing for your volunteers and everybody that's volunteering, it's an adult waiver. So what that means is they will understand that if they are injured while working the fair, their health insurance is primary. The comp for the, the workers' compensation coverage will not cover them. The reason it won't cover them is they're not paid. If there's no salary, there's no comp coverage.
I'm going to demand a salary this year, though.
Me too.
No, I think people understand that.
Yeah, but it's better, you have it all documented, and that way, paper makes no enemies, so that you're good...
You have to fill out more of those.
They're real simple.
To volunteers. People just show up and it's like, hey, I want to help you, you know, so...
Yep, fill it out. It literally takes a minute to sign their name and check a box. That's real easy. So I can give you a supply, I can give you one-eighth copies. But yeah, I am more than happy to sit down with you and go through this. It was literally pulling teeth last year because no one quite got it, and I was never given to the person that could tell me the most. So I was guessing a lot of it and asking, does that sound about right? Sure.
Well, yeah, but you were dealing with somebody that had never experienced the fair. We hadn't had it for the two years. But Kama, you might want to sit in on this meeting too and feed some of this information, because Kama does a lot of the dealing with pretty much everything and everybody in the fair. But we want Bill to be there because he's going to learn about it.
I have a chair.
No problem. I love volunteering and stuff.
Very much appreciate it.
I'm sure. All right, Carrie. So, pick a date, fellas and ladies.
Yep, next week, other than nine o'clock on Tuesday, no, no, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'm sorry, I'm on vacation, Monday or Tuesday.
Doug's going to give us an update, I'll go over the calendar and see where we're going. Does it have to be business hours?
As long as I'm home by dark. No, I have trouble with my eyes, with the lights hitting them at night.
How far are you driving?
Oh, no, I can leave here when sunset.
Could we do it early morning?
Sure.
Like a seven, I have to be at work by nine, nine-thirty typically.
I'm up at 5:30 every day.
All right.
And it took me 28 minutes to get here.
Seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty. Can we do seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty's a great time.
Yeah.
I'll go over the calendar.
Okay.
Thirty, thirty, we just...
Also, I could come anytime tomorrow, too.
Um, I don't know if I could do tomorrow.
Friday till noon.
I can do Friday, Friday morning.
Yep, 7:30?
Yeah. Yeah, you would do Friday. I got one caveat, I might be a grandfather Thursday afternoon.
Oh, nice.
Maybe induced, so...
We'll let everyone know when it is, but, um, let's move on.
Okay.
Awesome. Trying to get a date together, it's painful. All right, so Doug, you're up next.
Okay.
Give us a little update, don't go too fast.
Do you have a study for this?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
It's Friday, 7:30?
They have not settled yet. Bill has to be involved in that, you know, he may be taking off or something, go ahead.
Yeah.
Try your day, Doug.
All right. Well, thank you, my name is Doug Downey, I am the chair for the Sterling Fair, so I'm a Sterling resident, lived very near in Sterling for many, many, many years. I know I've met John Marine and David, I'd welcome to meet you. So you want to report on kind of the state of the fair and where we stand? Okay, besides...
How's it going on?
So, the Sterling Fair has been going on since 1981, so brief, really brief history, because I don't have limited time. It went on from the early, I think it was like 1850, early 1800s, right, until the 1950s, and it stopped for reasons unknown. 1981, bicentennial year, it started behind the fire station, and then it evolved from there. It was at the school for many years, 1999, we went to the airport, and that's where we are now. So it started as a small event, and now it's a pretty big event. We are very happy and proud to say that we are still a committee of the town, that's why most of the fair committee members stay on. We are the only fair we know of its size that is still free admission and free parking.
We might have to stretch our...
Yeah, yeah, and I wanted to bring that up too, because that, I've had people say that to me, and now, you know, this other cost, it would be really difficult, because we don't even own the airport, we can't fence it off. We could, we could get temporary fencing, but it would probably blow 90% of our budget for, you know, for just to attempt to fence that off, and it would have to come down. Parking would be difficult because we already have some traffic issues, and the police department, DPW are great, they help us with that, but now if we're collecting money for parking, we have security that could back up even further, so... And one of the reasons why most of the fair committee members are on the fair committee is we pride ourselves on being free. You can still come, you know, have a great time and not spend a dime at the fair. It's hard not to, because you attempted to, but you can't. So that's part of it. We're all volunteers, so everybody in the committee is a volunteer, and that's another thing we pride ourselves on, so... We, as I mentioned, 2020, it was everything, I think the whole world was canceled, right? We were canceled, 2021, we did cancel, it was just before the fair, so some financial burden there, but we've weathered the storm, no pun intended, and we are back on for 2022. So we're in full swing, we've been planning all year, so one thing folks don't know is we'll end the fair this year on September 11, 2022, and within a week, we'll start planning for 2023. It's a year-long planning event. We have a full committee that we love, and we are always looking for people to volunteer and help us with that, along with people to volunteer at the fair. Maybe you've seen a few signs around town lately.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was one of our newest members, Scott Handler, that came up with that idea, so not only promote the fair, but also the volunteers, so... And if anybody's listening at home, whatever, we have a long list, and our vice chair, Dustin, is going to start contacting people to say, show what's available, and what we need help for, and where their interests are, so... So that's, you know, kind of our speech, we're three days, so we start at 5:00 p.m. on Friday, we go until 11:00 with fireworks, as long as it's not raining. Saturday, we start at 9:00 a.m., there's a pancake breakfast by the Grange from 7:00 to 9:00. We go from 9:00 to 11:00 on Saturday night, and that's the rain date for the fireworks. And then Sunday, again, pancake breakfast from 7:00 to 9:00, the fair's on from 9:00 until 6:00 p.m. And there's a lot, and I hesitate to say how many different even departments in town help us out, because I'll always miss one, and I don't want to do that, but we depend a lot on the departments, the people, the community groups, to really help us get this fair going. If anybody has not been, I would ask you to go to the airport right now and see what it looks like, and then go the weekend of the fair, and you'll be amazed, because right now it's a big open field with airplanes in it, and then, you know, it becomes this huge, and even have a picture right behind all of you, that was Rose McCPherson painted, so... So that is our fair, our theme for this year is Seeds of Hope 2022, and I think we can all use seeds of hope after the last two years and everything that's going on in the world, right, you know, pandemic and whatever, so that is what we're planning for.
How many of fair volunteers do you have, anyway?
So, it's hard to say. For the actual fair, it's probably well over 150. So we have a lot of groups that show up, church groups, we have, you know, groups like the Masons is going to park cars, right, there's another group, and I apologize if I got their name, they're going to help us. We have people that just show up and say, hey, you know, I'm here, what can I do? Can I sit in the exhibit hall, make sure no one touches anything? Can I help pick up trash? Can I, whatever. The fair committee, I believe, was it 13 people, I think is on the fair committee right now?
We have to do more than we're going to have.
We have a few that we're going to be voting in, yeah, yeah, but we always look for more. I know right now we're looking for people to do the vendors, so I'm doing that in addition to doing the chairperson. Live stock, so we have Chip in Townahalla that have been doing it for many, many years, they would like to step down, not away, but step down, we're looking for people to volunteer there. Volunteer electricians, so they have to be licensed, right, so Carl's been doing it for many years, Carl Graham, he would like to step down, not away, and we're also trying to backfill some of the people that have been in the long positions so that they can enjoy the fair, you know, and also have that backup, because there are certain things that, you know, are unique to the fair. If we own the airport and we could have our own little spot for the fair, it would be a lot different. We could have permanent buildings, we could have all that, we can't. So all this has to go up in a couple of days and come down basically in two days, so... But yeah, so roundabout answer, I know I'm long-winded here, I love to talk, but I would say during the fair, probably at least 150. Year-round, it's probably maybe 20 people, and we could always use more.
I think you should contact you, I guess, if you're interested.
Yeah, the best way is sterlingfair.org, and then we're, right now, so we got a little overwhelmed with the people, which is great, you know, kind of coming in, so we're going to start contacting those folks. The other thing I'd ask too is, so I know if you haven't gotten yet, we have an invitation for all, we have this opening ceremony on Saturday, even though technically we open Friday night, so all of you to come and speak. And the other thing, I'm going to look at everybody in the room here, we're going to have a dunk tag this year, and it's going to benefit the Sterling Fair, so maybe raise some money, and we're looking for people that would, willing to get dunked, so... I see you're appointing a bill, huh?
I think some people are...
Declined.
But yeah, so I know that the family has been doing it, they've been doing it for many years, and this year, they usually do it for different community groups, this year they want to do it to help the fair, because our costs have gone up substantially, just for, you know, everything, the world costs have gone up, or I should say, you know, the economy we're in, so, you know, we've got to absorb some of those costs, and we can do it.
Questions, David?
I just want to thank you for putting this together. I mean, logistics behind something of this magnitude, I've been involved in a few groups, but nothing to this extent, so...
Really is amazing, and it's, you know, there's a core group of fair committee members that put their heart and soul into this, they really do, and, you know, not to exclude any of the volunteers, all the departments in town that work with us, it really is a big, big event, but we love it, we think it's one of the premier events, what's the Telegram call it, the premier event of Sterling? Not to diminish any other events, but, and I think it just brings the whole, and it's not just Sterling, it's the community, you know.
I thought it was the select board meeting. Except with a premier event.
Yeah, so the fair is a close second.
Will the advertising, will there be any special, any different advertising this year, or just the signs along the Route 12 and that, and I suppose it'll be, of course, the website, and I don't know, Eating House News or...
Yeah, Eating House News, the Clint Daily Item, they're all covering for us, usually the Telegram will reach out to us. One of the things is being all volunteer, you know, we usually get free press, that's a good thing. We will have the signs that will be out on the highway, the state usually provides the big electronic signs, I'll be contacting Kama with the signs for the town here too, and I'll fill out that form, you know, just to make everybody aware. The carnival usually puts up posters too for us, so, just to get the word out there, so... Yeah, and I guess the only other thing I'd ask is, is there any way you can vote on good weather for the...
Mother Nature hasn't really liked us a lot lately, so...
Not lately, but 2018, 2019, the last two years of the fair, phenomenal. The weather was perfect, not too hot, not too cold, no rain, I probably jinxed it, but...
Oh, Ann already did that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
How about, do you have the parking attendants this year?
We do, so we have two groups that are going to park, and they're going to help us, and they're providing 10 people each for five shifts, that's been a major, so we never thought, when we moved to the airport, we never thought, ah, you know, we have so much room, well, we are almost outgrowing the airport, I mean, it's that much of the parking. It's a good problem to have, a lot of the fairs around, you know, there's some great fairs in the communities, I won't mention them, but they're, you know, they're struggling, we're very fortunate, and I, and part of the reason is, you know, because it is free, you know, it's, and...
I think a lot of people buy the, you know, the pens and all that.
They do, yeah, yeah.
I hope they, I mean, they should, I think there's some signings for that too, you know, please, you know, buy a pen, help offset the crowds, you've got to tell them, you know, you just got to tell people.
That's what you do when you're in the booth, John.
Yeah, so I forgot to mention, so our, a big part of our income is selling the buttons, you don't have to buy one to get in, most people do, you know, obviously like the vendors, and so, you know, the great unhealthy food, right, they pay for that, even the window companies and the gutter companies are trying to sell, you know, those all help us to keep it free. And we also, and I should mention, I don't know how much time I have left, I'm pretty sure if I do, but we're working with the Senior Center for the Age and Dementia Friendly Program. We're going to have a van on Saturday, so somebody can park at the Senior Center, and they will drive them in, we've already talked to the police department, we're going to kind of further it, and they'll be able to, we're going to have a drop-off spot, we're moving our entrance way down from where it normally is, closer to the existing hangar, the old, I guess the main part of the airport, and there will be an accessible gate for And there will be an accessible gate for handicap, age, dementia-friendly. And then, as always, for many years, we've had people that will drive the golf carts and, you know, will help get people around, and so that will be there too. So we're really excited about that addition to the fair. We've done a lot of things through the years, you know, we want everybody to come. We don't care if you're, you know, six months old or 170, you know? We want everybody to be able to attend the fair, and that's our goal. And we're doing things to make sure that it's accessible for everyone, so. Yeah. And Veronica at the Senior Center's been working very hard with us, and I think it's gonna be, we're gonna test it on Saturday this year, and then 2023, if it's successful, you know, we'll expand it, so.
All right.
All right.
That's it, thank you so much, John.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
For all you do, and if there's anything else we can do for you besides give you a form in to, or a form to try and entice people.
Dunk tag.
No, put that in my notes. Also, before you leave, you might wanna, I don't know if you wanna say anything about appointing both Dustin Whittaker, who is a member of the fair committee, and vice chair at this point, and then Scott Handler as a member of the fair committee.
Yeah, so we wanna appoint them as official fair committee members. Both have done quite a bit for the fair so far coming in. Dustin kind of started last year, but then we didn't have the fair, and he's donated things, his own, and done a lot. Scott, he's kind of in charge of our PR. He's the one responsible for the yellow signs you see, which was a great idea. So we really are excited to have them come in and become committee members.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion to appoint Scott and Dustin to the fair committee?
Yep, move to appoint both to the fair committee.
I'll second that motion.
Almost in favor?
Of course, I.
Rans and I. Did y'all settle on a time and a date with Joanne for?
7:30 Friday.
7:30 Friday? Well, that's good, John. All right, okay, so everybody knows, 7:30 Friday, you owe me, straighten this out. Joanne, I don't wanna spend more than 12 bucks.
$100 is too much.
Sadly. See? That's on my page. All right. So the next agenda item is, now Mr. Besad is not coming in?
That's correct.
Okay. So Bill Besad has been on the Monty Tech School Committee for a few years now, and it's time to reappoint him, and he's okay with that, or we're just gonna do it?
No, no, I didn't contact him. He's fine.
And Mr. Mackey can tell you, sometimes he gets appointed to things that, surprise!
That's what happens when people show up, right?
That's right. Even if you, that's why he comes to all the meetings, make sure we don't put him on. Okay, so I entertain a motion to appoint Bill back to, onto the Monty Tech School Committee.
Yep, I'll move to appoint Bill Besad to the Monty Tech School Committee for the next term.
I will second that motion.
All right. So, Rans and I?
Smith.
All right, and then we have the administrators' review. If you gentlemen wanna get into that.
Are we doing a Sterling storage committee?
No. No, I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought everybody knew. No, we're not doing that. I think Bill can explain to you the reasons why, but we talked to Tony, Tony has talked to the storage people, and it almost feels as though we might, they all might be on the same page, so no need for us to get involved.
Good, good.
I like that. Getting involved. So the next agenda item is actually Bill's three-month review. So, John, did you wanna start?
Yeah, yeah, a little more informal than a formal one, but still, I mean, I just drafted down something else this afternoon. It's nice when you have time to do this kind of stuff, like in the past, you know? But I know, I think, I think the notes I wrote were that, Bill, I mean, communication is crucial, and I think, you know, you have, you've established really good working relationships with the town hall employees, the department heads, police, fire, all the, to keep, you know, departments in town. I know various committee members, you've all probably have a better relationship with their state reps and state center than the past couple of county administrators, and you've only been here three months. I will say that, it's only been three months, so it's, you know, there's still a lot to do, I think. Number two, obviously you've picked up the prior TA projects, some of which were, have been, you know, gathering a lot of dust, and really moved them forward. Completed the classification comp study, that's a work in process, as we both, we all know, and you'll have to continue, you know, we'll all have to continue to implement an update now, but that's a, that's a big step for the town. And it took a lot of time to continue to move forward with the complete streets, starting soon, downtown revitalization, I know that's on your TA report all the time, the Buttrick, little things like the Buttrick roof, 1835 Septic, various of the projects, so. And you give us a good update every two weeks, and I appreciate that. I think, I think it's up to us, but it's up to all of us to prioritize. I think, I've got a feedback, 90, almost all of it positive. I've had a couple of people just say, well, I wish, you know, maybe we could do this or that differently, in different order. And as I've told Ma Rain and Dave, I think, I mean, in the past, we just gotta prioritize. We've all gotta get together and work up like a, really a priority sheet, which will change as circumstances dictate. But I think just so we're on the page of what, you know, are we prioritizing this stuff the right way? I mean, the thing is very detailed, library, lift elevator, playground, school floor, there's one thing going on all the time. So I think you've done a great job stepping in, handling it right away, really getting to know the players involved in less than three months. That's impressive. And I think that if we can help just, you know, jointly put together, prioritize, you know, these tasks and the use of the funding we have, you know, ARPA, capital, et cetera, it's all gonna help the taxpayers, just a matter, I think, with using the funds, I think it's just, I think it's just a matter of the timing, you know, can we, capital generally takes longer, ARPA is shorter, if we need to do something with ARPA for downtown to move things along, whether it be the Verizon, I know these groups, they need a prodding every once in a while, but, but no, I'm very, I'm very pleased, I think it's been, you're off to a great start, you know, as long as, you know, you don't sign any contracts we're unaware of and things like that, I think we're gonna be in good shape going forward, and I mean that, so, thank you. I hope you're happy, and I hope to continue to be happy, we're all happy for a long time.
Happy, happy, happy.
So I think Bill's done a tremendous job. I think, I wish I had the youth and vitality. He shows up at pretty much every meeting, fire station, police station, the parade. I was at the mountain this week with a Highway Association gathering, and who shows up? Bill. So it's pretty impressive that.
I didn't take the free lunch.
He didn't eat, I tried to get him to stay.
Talked myself out of it.
But I make a point when I come in this building during business hours to stop in every office, and every, every office is extremely happy with the conversations that he has, the communication that he has with every office. And I think that's very important, especially what we've come to see over the last few years. There's a very cohesive group here, and Bill's done a tremendous job with that. Administration-wise, I mean, like John says, it's incredible the amount of projects he is seeing and getting them to move forward. So I appreciate what he's done, and I think he's done a tremendous job.
Okay, well, I can't really say much more about what he's done. I mean, it's a breath of fresh air, just the communication piece of it with not just the town hall, but all the departments across the town. That's a plus. Hard to pinpoint, John, what project should be prioritized, because right now, all these projects that are coming together, which Bill has actually gotten to that point with Darren and with Ryan, a lot of these projects are waiting for other people.
I know.
You know, you're waiting for engineers, you're waiting for supplies, you're waiting for this, you're waiting for that. The school project, luckily we'll get the tiles in, maybe not, you never know. They say that things can come along, and you just have to hope for the best. So it's hard to put a star next to anything. My biggest thing for Bill to do as we move forward is to, A, continue following through on these projects, and then get some of them actually done, you know? And continue with his relationship with all the different departments, keep it open, open communications, where, I mean, I've had people say they feel comfortable just coming up to the office and talking to you. They feel bad that you're not there, but, you know, they do like coming to the office.
Is that the mountain, get a free temperature?
No, I'm excited still to this day, after three months to have you here. And I have full confidence that you're gonna move us forward, and with some of your other counterparts, make us very successful and stars, so it's good. And your next job actually is to sit in the dunk table.
I swear to you, it's.
All right. Anything else?
How do you feel?
Yeah, what would you like us to do for you?
I think we're in a pretty good spot right now. I think, you know, the first handful of months or years is gonna be getting the backlog projects of COVID and whatever else, you know, rolling. Obviously, there's some multi-year projects, the downtown being the one, I mean, we're 20 years into it, you know? We get some things going, so, but a good portion of them, we can start checking off the list here and there, so.
One thing I wanna mention too, you know, we talk about projects, and Bill got thrown into this one, along with Lynn Shepherd, but the playground project that we were gonna take all the monies from ARPA funds to put together, because, you know, capital didn't, we really didn't wanna spend capital on it. Well, we got a call last week, and we had been on a list for, with the state, with recreation money, that they would, you know, possibly throw something into the pot, and we were, it didn't happen. But then we got a call last week, I think it was just Monday, a week ago Monday, that our state rep, Meg Coin, wanted to put an amendment in, and did we still think that we wanted that money? You bet. And so I had Meg touch base with Bill, they put everything together, they put it forward with the legislature, and we got $100,000 towards that project, which is massive, you know? Dick can tell me, tell you how long it took us to get 60 from the state for anything that we wanted for the senior center. So getting $100,000, can't thank the state reps enough for putting that through. I like it, it's not the whole project, but it's a good piece of it, so, and it's shovel-ready.
Okay, well, free up, free up the ARPA money to.
Right, for something else.
Next, so.
So there's that, and then, Bill, did you wanna give us a town administrator's report, or do you think we already covered it?
I guess we can go with it. We had no applicants at this time for the planner position, so we'll look at a couple other options, kind of moving forward. Conservation Commission, Barbara, Bertie, Matt and I, our retired agent interviewed the folks, the person, and offered the position. They had one, one interview this week and the next, beginning of next week on Monday, so once they have that, one happens to be in their hometown, so we'll see what happens. If we have to go back out, we will. Still plenty of board and committee vacancies, finance, capital, a couple others. If anybody's interested, checked back with the town council for Boylston about the agreement. I know they met last night, I didn't hear anything, well, before the meeting, so hopefully I hear something soon, so we can get that finalized for our building commissioner. Fred had sent out our reports closing out fiscal year 2022.
Is there any place that you put like a period? Oh, okay, at least a comma?
Semi-colon?
Kind of getting out of breath here.
You are.
Go ahead.
And we did apply for our second payment to the town for the ARPA funds that should be allotted to us. So hopefully we should be getting that second one. We did determine that August 8th should be the employee appreciation, thank you, as a, hopefully it's not raining or something that day, we'll make it work. So we'll send that information out in the signature folder. We have to update the regulatory agreement with Northgate. The original one was saying that there was going to be a certain percentage of ownership. They're just doing 100% rentals, so we just gotta sign off on that, they've gotta sign off on it, and I think send it off to the state for them to do their portion. And we have sent the expansion petition for the board off to our legislators. You've covered the playground thing. Nothing new on the library lift and elevator, school flooring, that contract's been awarded for all the hallways there in VCT tile. So we met with the contractor and the school facilities folks yesterday, so they'll be getting everything ready and hopefully getting in the order to perhaps get all of the work completed this summer on the ripping the carpet out, putting in the tiles. Storage building, I think I told you, came in significantly more than expected, so we'll put that off for a little while. Met with a vendor, landscaper today for pricing, Chuck Plasthead has sent us the drawings, see where that comes in, you know, depending on where things stand, we may do a portion of it, all of it, you know? We only have 53 or 55,000, so.
That's for the Pexmont?
Pexmont, yeah. We already bought the new pump, so it's looking better. And see where that goes. Got the construction documents, getting ready for the roof here. Would you like to speak about the beach? I always give you the chance. We've signed with McCarty Engineers, they've done the survey, and they'll be meeting to talk about the design a little bit more next week, and hopefully get that completed sooner than later. 1835 Septic, I think Board of Health is talking about it tomorrow for what needs to happen. We've ordered some of the furniture, thank you, Vicki, for the stuff that needs to go up there, still have to get the tables and chairs. Nothing new on the 62 and 140 engineering, nothing new on the sidewalks other than the design on Maple Street. And we have the survey plans, Darren, Ryan and I are looking at them, so we'll update the EDC on Monday, and then we can start coordinating what we need to do.
Any questions for Bill?
No, very thorough, just for boards and committees, I know it's a kind of a, you know, summer season, and people aren't really thinking about it, but I think in September, we oughta keep, you know, start pushing a little bit for some of these positions as best we can, especially Capital and Finance Committee, because they start to get into their season later in the fall, and very important to have a full complement on those, at those two committees among others, but, but no, it's.
David?
I just wanna add that I probably shouldn't have questioned whether or not there was any vandalism recently at the beach and the park, because lo and behold, we had some vandalism. So I have talked to Bill a little bit about moving forward, getting some prices on the cameras. We're gonna reach out to the company that currently has the cameras in town and see what they can offer for us. And we have another contact for another company that we'll also get a price from to try to install some cameras, maybe some permanent and some that are portable. And, you know, maybe we can catch some of these vandals or nothing else, you know, try to put them at bay. It's really unfortunate the damage that was done.
We're spending a lot of money cleaning that up and fixing things or replacing things, and it's.
It's not right. It really isn't, so, and Patrice is the one that takes the rent of it, Patrice facilities, so, you know, see what we can do to help her out by, I think we all had the same conversation, let's get some cameras up there, even trail cameras, get a high-def trail camera, you know, and see if we can catch a couple of these urchins. Mr. Sweet, would you like to ask anybody any questions?
I'm all good.
You're all good? Okay, Mama?
We're good.
Okay. Mr. Sweet is doing a Boy Scout project, Eagles, right?
Well, it's American, so that he can get to Eagles.
Okay, so part of the pain and suffering is being in a select board meeting. But really, if, town meeting is probably more, I wanna see you there next year. May? Yeah, no, he says. Okay, the other, we do have a couple of things with the vandalism, yes, was one. Moving, moving ahead, the fire department is going to wanna use the Memorial Park on September 24th, that will be their barbecue. So they're trying to get it and set it up, and they'll send in a notice to block that time, comma, but if you would block it, that would be great. And as we all know, the fair is the 10th, Wednesday, 12th. Speaking of getting some money, we also got, it's actually for the police, wouldn't it be, comma, for the opioid, $1,400, no, $1,437,01?
I've been looking for the owner of that money.
Well, it says Ma Rain Cranston, but I haven't seen the chat. Good afternoon. But this is something that, Tom, I actually filled out some paperwork last year sometime, and it's to go to the police, and when there are fire, I guess, for the Narcan and.
Training for.
Training.
Whatever drug training, because it does come from the companies that are selling.
This is a settlement, and it, and it won't be the last. So, there's that. And then, speaking about finance and capital, Chris Buckett would like to get together with you and myself and Fred, he is the chair of finance now, he's got some questions. And I think that's it, other than John's going on vacation. And I should mention also, you have the opportunity to visit, if it's, I understand it's really hot, 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 Senior Center is open for people to go over and, you know, sit and read a book, or at least get out of the heat. And library, all of these public buildings, that you can come in and cool, you can come and sit with Vicki and visit for a while, that'd be great. So, the other thing is, yeah, come sit up here. Tuesday, July 26th, the fire department will be closing off Cross Street for their, and they've already contacted Clinton Savings Bank, they know it, and they're gonna do their hose testing, no, hose testing, and that's gonna be, begin at nine in the morning, if the weather is good. So, stay off Cross Street. And, not to be a Debbie Donner, but we did get a notice that Dave Johnson, DJ, is actually gonna retire, or is retired, from the Sterling Police Department after many years of dedicating his life to the town of Sterling. We wish him well, we should wish him good or better health.
Absolutely.
So, thanks for all you did, DJ. So, anything else?
I'm not sure.
Well, then, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Phil Coyne, aye, Smith.
Krantz and I. That's it, you can go, Zach.